At our last meeting, well, let's call this to order. Okay, let's, let's try to move on with this tonight. I'd so like to be home before the sun comes up. Now, at our last meeting, we got through the first four articles. However, I am led to believe that it may be necessary to reopen some discussion on Article Four, on one or two isolated points that perhaps could have been better presented. So, um, the chair asked permission of the commission here to revisit Article Four.
Do you need a?
Revisit the entire article?
No, no, just few isolated points that maybe could have been better presented.
Can we know those points?
Yes, we will as soon as somebody gets up to speak on it.
Well, um, do, should staff, staff bring up that issue? My, my, I guess my question is, um, I think we should proceed with what points need to be addressed. And if, if we can get sort of a anonymized idea of what those points are that we need to discuss, so that we can take it in that order and not bounce from one item to another and try to address each item separately.
Yeah, I, I understand. I know what you're saying.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, um, do we have a couple of items from staff relative to Article Four?
Um, actually, I got an item from Article Three regarding the impact fees.
Oh, Article Three.
Is that all right?
Uh, I really don't understand why we have to weigh in on impact fees.
Cause it's in the land development regulations.
It's in the land, yeah.
Why would we lock our fees into the LDRs?
Well, that's the existing condition, that it's in the LDRs. The question, I think, at one point was whether it should be removed, and a determination has been made that it should not be removed. And so, staff wants to make sure it's part of what you review, so it can be considered by the city council.
So, alright, so first item, do we keep the fees in the LDRs or do we recommend their removal?
I would recommend that they would be remo- I, it doesn't-
Are we talking, well, with your permission, I think there may be a question of whether you're talking about removing the actual fee amounts as opposed to the ordinance which adopts.
I, I, I would make this a separate ordinance. Not, not removing the fee, but the LDR.
Be, be on a separate document.
Making it out of the LDRs. Why, why can't it just be an ordinance?
And the reason, the reason is, what?
I'm sorry.
What is your reason for suggesting that, so we can all understand?
Well, let's say, within seven years, when you go back to revisit this, let, let's say in the interim and three years down the road, uh, things change and you want either lower the rates or increase the rates. Uh, the economy changes, or, or you wanna spur development, or, or you wanna come up with a, a tax abatement, so instead of coming up with a tax abatement, you use, uh, the impact fees instead of charging a developer an impact fee. Or, uh, like we did up in Illinois, a lot of times you would waiver different fees to spur development. And, and if you're locking it into your LDRs, then it's, uh, it's almost like the charter. It's ironclad. You can't change it for seven, unless you do a tax amendment or, and, that's why I say make it simple.
The reason to codify it is to put everybody on notice that you have an impact fee program.
Okay.
If you remove it, then there's no notice. If, if it's either not in the city code or not-
No, I'm saying have it in the city code, but not why on the-
But it's a land development regulation, so why should it be outside the LDRs?
Why don't the LDRs point to the city code and let the city set the fees as they need to every year?
If it's in the city code, then you might not have an opportunity to comment on it when there are amendments to it. Because the planning commission doesn't comment on changes to the city code. It only comments on changes to the land development regulations, unless I have that wrong.
What about keeping the language by removing the fees?
Sorry?
What about keeping the language by removing the fees?
That's what I was suggesting you consider.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we really don't wanna tell staff how much to be charging for this, that, or the other thing. Let the market kinda shift. Yeah.
So, what, so what was the language?
I, I mean, at this point, why, I really want to bring up, cause last time, when we discussed Article Three, and then, cause everything in the LDR has been stricken through. Cause, uh, but we just found out that as of November last year, the other departments had amended, you know, the fees. And then this item went to city council, and then there was a resolution, and then we, I think we have provided that to you. So, because it was adopted already, so we ju- just wanted to bring that to your attention. This would be incorporated into the LDR, but now, and then to your point, if, uh, you guys don't want to have the fee schedule, uh, being a part of this LDR, and not to avoid, you know, having a tax amendment every time the city change your, your fee. I mean, that's something, yeah, that the recommendation can be made.
Well, that makes better sense, because fees will have to go up or down, and that should not result in a tax amendment to the land development regulations.
It's gonna be just a consent item, you know, by the city.
Put them on notice that we have these fees.
Yeah.
Would, would it have to be a tax amendment if we, if, let's say in a couple of years? It wouldn't. So, why can't, how do, how do we get around that then?
By having a separate fee schedule that's not codified as part of the ordinance that requires impact fees to be imposed.
So, how do you, how do you?
But now, did, did we not have that before, though? Was, did that not exist before that we had?
No, I think it, well, I don't know the history, but right now, it's codi-, it's all codified in the land development regulations. The ordinance requiring the fees as well as the fee schedule.
Yeah, Debbie, I see you're shaking your head. What, what?
Uh, nodding my head, yes.
Yes.
The, the question here that I think they're trying to clarify for you is that the text changed from back in November. The text in this document that we revised is not the same text as the ordinance that was adopted back in November, because it was never pulled into the document that we were working from. So, they wanted you to know that, that we will be revising the text to match the adopted amend, the adopted ordinance. We struck the fee schedule, because you never, we never recommend that you have the fee schedule within the LDRs, for the same reasons that you all are discussing now. It doesn't make sense. So, if you look at how we, we struck it, we revised the intro language saying that it refers to a fee schedule that may be updated from time to time. So, that was the point that Nixon was trying to make to you all, is that the text needs to reflect the ordinance that was adopted back in November. And we will do so between now and city council, but we will keep your recommendation that you agreed with us as, that's, that we struck the fee schedule, and that as you did before, you agreed to that, to, that that was the best approach. Do I still have the same agreement?
Well, let's-
Were there any major differences in the text?
Not, well, there's a little bit of, there's, nothing real major, but it's like the petitioning for credits. Um, language is, is a little bit different. Right, they added, um, some additional, as you can see through the strike through underline, they've added some additional petitioning requirements. Uh, and again, this has already gone through adop-, adoption. There's some deferments in there. Um, let's see, what else?
That's it?
That was pretty much about it, right. It was the deferral for certain types of, um, like, they deferred impact fees for affordable and workforce housing, uh, which is pretty standard, um, that people do, that communities do. Uh, and that was about it. Other than then, they revised the fee schedule. And so, the fee schedule is different than the fee schedule that's actually re-struck.
Which is not surprising. Fees have to change as circumstances change.
Right, so the fee schedule changed.
Alright.
So, I think that's what we wanted to clarify for you.
So, what particular item in Schedule C, do you want us, obviously you would like a motion on that, correct?
It would make sense for us to take a motions. Simply removing the fee schedule and adopting the new language.
What particular item then, do you know where it is?
Go ahead, Nixon.
No, no, and because Article Three, you guys already voted on it and made a recommendation to approve it. But now, this will be an amendment to that motion.
So, you wanna approve the amendment to Article Three? Can you specify sort of on record?
Three fourteen oh seven.
The, the language is already adopted.
One at a time, we can't all talk over, we'll never get the minutes straight.
Just remember, the language was already adopted.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to discuss the language. Really, my recommendation would be for you all to allow us to strike the fee schedule. Cause we have to incorporate the new language.
And to separately provide for, by what resolution?
What article?
Via resolution.
Division fourteen. Okay, I make a motion then, that under Article Three, Division fourteen.
Or section?
Section fourteen.
Okay.
That we amended to delete that item.
To strike the fee schedule, that's what you're doing.
Strike the fee schedule and provide for fees by resolution of the city council.
By fees by resolution, okay?
And, and but to also incorporate, you know, the newly adopted, uh, language from, from city council.
Yes, the newly adopted language, okay. Since that's already been voted on.
I accept all those changes, yes.
Alright, seconded by Ms. Blay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that wraps up Article Three, right? Okay, now, back to Article Four. Alright.
There was a specific item on Article Four?
There was. Kevin, I believe you had something on Four. I know John Dela Gloria did, and he's not here tonight, which is too bad.
That, that's on him. Kevin Burns, twenty sixty-five Alamanda Drive.
I like how you put that, yeah.
Um, just, just two items, um, and one of them, you can't do much about tonight. Under mixed use. Um, page twenty-one, section four point three oh two. They included in the comp plan that a mixed-use project is three entities. And part of it is, has to be residential. And I think that the way the comp plan went through and the way it ended up getting adopted, they changed it. Originally, it was two different entities, or two different, it could be an office and a restaurant. It could be a hotel and a, a restaurant. It could be two of those things. It never required that residential had to be part of it. Now, the new comp plan says you have to have three entities, and one of them must be residential. So, you can't do a hotel, a restaurant, and an office building unless you do housing. And that, I don't think, I think it got slipped by. There's nothing you can do about it, except make a recommendation that you all would like the chance at some point in time to come back and review it, because it's a very simple, uh, comp plan amendment that staff can do. But this is your chance, if you even consider that, that it's an issue, that you want to come back at some point in time and address it.
Just speaking off the cuff here, then there'd be one or two ways to look at it. It could be two of the three, or we could move the hotel into the residential side and, and solve the problem that way.
Or somebody wanted to do an office, uh, a, uh,
A restaurant.
Uh, of, office, um, res-, uh, what do you got? Retail and a, a restaurant. They're, they're three different categories. But you can't do that, cause you, they're requiring you to have housing within, if, if Clark Brenn, or, or if a property owner next door wanted to do, uh, a two-story building and, and make it mixed use, they would be required to put residential. Maybe where residential isn't the best, uh, fit. And again, if it was a comp plan, and you know how that comp plan went every, at, toward the end, things got approved that.
I, I brought this up the last time, and, and I, I agree. And I didn't see it in the, uh, planning commission recommendations. I thought we, we, uh, is, is it?
See, we all wanna see residential as part of a mixed-use development, but I understand what you're saying, there might be isolated smaller projects where the, the development picture just may not make it feasible.
Exactly, and then, so you're, so something, a property doesn't get redeveloped, because somebody will build an office building with retail on the bottom, but if they have to add residential, they're, they're not gonna do it, they can't. They can't afford to do it, because the standards are, you know, a hundred percent different when you're now providing housing.
So, so would a, a, a simple change in phraseology to and/or be the solution to the, to the dilemma?
Well, with the way it used to be, any combination of two or more permitted uses is what it was for the last twenty years. Now, it says, any combination of three or more are permit, uh, permitted uses, one which must be residential. If we go back to the old language, it actually made more sense. But again, this is just a recommendation to go back to the council, cause after you adopt the LDRs, that you would like to see, if, if it's what this body wants to do, that they do a small-scale tax amendment, or whatever it is to the comp plan, whatever, however staff, you know, tells you how to, large, whatever it is, and they'll figure it out. But I just wanted to get that on the record in front of you all, because if they say, oh, planning commission never brought it up, so we're not gonna talk about it. The other issue that, that came up, which you can do something about, and-
Well, we say we can't, but we can, because we're still here haggling over language on that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, we can correct that.
Yes, or let your feelings be known.
No.
Debbie, you're shaking your head now.
It matches the comprehensive plan language. So, your recommendation would be to, to revise the, or revise the comprehensive plan, and then come back and revisit your LDRs. But right now, these, this has to reflect what the comp plan says.
We can make the recommendation here and now to do that revision, yes. Alright.
I make a motion then.
I second it.
And just spell out the motion, boys.
Kenny, you're the maker.
Oh, boy, opened my mouth on that one, didn't I? That we go back to the old language of mixed use, it should be any combination of two, not three, for permitted use. Could be residential office, residential, commercial, commercial, uh, office.
Or strike the residential requirement.
Any, any combination of two. Strike the residential where it must be residential.
What if you, you leave that but put may?
Hmm, may gets dicey, really. You don't wanna say may.
If somebody wants to do mixed use and have residential, they're, they're allowed to. It's a permitted use, but right now, we're dictating, everything has to have residential. It just, it doesn't make sense to, to have that dictation in there.
But are you recommending two changes? One, to remove the restriction for residential, and the reduction of three uses to two? Yes, yes. They go down to the gables, and I, I, I'll see, uh, my broker down there, he has an office, and on the bottom, it's, it's retail. Uh, another building could be office, and then it's a restaurant. Uh, there's another one down there that, uh, it, it's, all three.
Yeah.
A brokerage house, residential, and commercial on the bottom. So, why, why are we limiting ourselves, or, or just making everything residential? It doesn't make any sense.
Alright, let's hear from our staff attorney.
So, the way it reads at least here, and it probably parallels in the comprehensive plan, is that it's a combination of office, hotel, multifamily, and retail, or any, and you're changing the three to the two, um, or more combination of permitted uses. Then there's a parenthetical, one of which must be residential, and I recommend you say one of which may be the residential.
May.
So, that would be right.
Or, or else you don't need it, because it's one of the permitted uses.
Well, why not just strike?
Why, why, why? It's a permitted use, so.
Counsel, counsel. Gary?
Sorry, no, I'm saying that's their recommendation. So, do we need the parenthetical at all?
No.
You wouldn't.
Okay, so strike the parenthetical.
Strike the parenthetical.
Why are we changing from three to two, though, I guess? Right, if the issue was the, the residential piece, that we don't wanna force residential into the building, but then again, why are we changing from three to two to make it a mixed-use property?
Well, the, the, the reason is, most practical mi- mixed-use units or, or developments are usually two, two combinations. Is, is retail on the bottom, residential, retail, office. Um, uh, hotel with a, a cafe downstairs. They're, they're mixed use.
And retail sometimes.
So, yeah, and so, to start saying you have to have three, is really, there's not a whole lot. It's usually two or more. It, it could be four. But the, the practicality in our city, and I'm worried about our city, is that two, it's what the law was for many, many years. Now, we're making it even more restrictive, and that was hard enough to get people when we allowed it for, for two years for the last, you know, twenty years.
Well, you wanna strike the residential component.
My question to the city attorney would be, so if we leave it at, I'm sorry, could I?
Microphone, microphone, microphone.
So, if we leave it at three, but use may, it wouldn't take that much finagling with, um, going back and forth with staff?
No, you still have to do the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, okay.
The, what I was gonna say was, if there is an argument for three from one of the planners, you should hear the contrary point of view. There must have been some argument at the time it was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. So, I just wanted to put that on the table in case there was-
For practical purposes, two would be the better language to, to choose.
Two or more.
You go two or more, you know?
It said two or more, but yeah.
Let's go with the practical language and not make a compromise.
Two or more, and then what happens, happens, and strike the, the residential requirement.
Okay, Nick, Nixon, I'm gonna ask a question that the city council, uh, our, our board council proposed. What was it, what thought process was it by staff that you inserted the requirement of residential?
Or three or more at the time?
When, uh, the city, cause the comp plan is made of two basically documents. You got the GOP, which is the goals, objectives, and policies. And then you have the DIA, which is data inventory analysis. And then, you know, that would, has always been a long-standing policy in, in the comp plan when it was adopted back then, that mixed use was considered to be like, to include a residential component. And, uh, and I'm, I'm hearing the argument tonight. And then what we call mixed use, if we're talking about, you know, either horizontal integration or vertical integration of different uses, yeah, but this would not require specifically a PD zoning district. Cause a lot of time, I mean, if you wanna provide hotel, you know, a office, most of those uses are already permitted in the commercial office land use designation. You do not necessarily have to have a PD district to, to have some of those uses. And, and I think, you know, it all has to do with the purpose and, intended purpose of that, uh, spatial designation. It's really to provide, you know, transit-oriented development, and to, uh, allow, you know, a, a, for, to reduce, you know, I mean, uh, uh, people using the dependence on cars and this, and all those benefits, you know, for a PD in, in that aspect. But, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing, I mean, but then again, it's a matter of policies. I mean, the city can decide, you know, within that PD, yes, we can allow, you know, but two or more of the permitted uses. I mean, it doesn't have to be residential, but at this point, you know, it has always been in the comp plan. I, I think the zoning then did it, was the consistent with the comp plan. And then, so that's why, you know, I, I guess, you know, through that comp plan process, you know, the last UBS amendment, it was made even clearer, so that, you know, residential was part of.
Okay, so, so staff doesn't have any strong objections to going back?
I mean, it's, it's a policy, it's an issue.
Yeah, alright, let's, let's take it back.
And then again, two or more is the language we're looking for, correct?
Two or more, and that allows the residential wherever a developer thinks it's appropriate, and the city thinks it's the right place to put it.
And then-
Wait, so a question for staff. Is this only in the planned development district? Other, other zoning districts that this appears in?
I'm, I mean, uh, for the PCD, if you wanna do mixed use, then, you know, that would apply. In the NR, if you wanna do mixed use, then, you know, this would apply as well.
It should be this, the mixed use, you know, city-wide, because then they start cherry-picking where and what you're gonna do, and, 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 you know, I'm trying to make it consistent so that, or, or my opinion was that consistent so that the city, everybody has the opportunity to develop Dixie Highway, Seventh Avenue, wherever. Not that one neighborhood gets something better, and then we're gonna trash another neighborhood, because we're gonna allow something else.
Very true, right, okay.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor to revert to the prior language of two or more, striking the requirement for residential. Alright?
And there's a second.
And we have a second to that. Motion was made by Kenny, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're, we're past that.
And just the-
Now, you have another item.
Just one other item that people have been talking about for, for months and years, and when, when it came up, and then somehow it, it, uh, it got through, is on section, on page twenty-two, same, same section, but, uh, section, uh, minimum, uh, developed, four, three oh two, all the way down to, it says a minimum site, um, site area was for planned, for a PD, was the two acres. And the conversations that have been coming up over and over was that it was gonna drop down to a half an acre, or even one acre. And the reason being, and I'll take an example, we don't have two-acre sites in this city. And under the PU or the PD, you get much more scrutiny by staff. Um, it takes, it's more intense, more planning. They, they, they require a lot more, um, they're much more restrictive in the P, the PUD or the, the PDs, because of staff can really put, uh, restrictions on it. The issue is that when you look throughout the whole city, and I've been doing this on Dixie Highway, I'll take the, the movie theater and the old Watson's Restaurant. Everybody wants it redeveloped. It's just under an acre. And you're not buying a law firm next door. So, nobody can come in and redevelop that without it being a PU, because you're gonna need some adjustments because of the way the, the property, we have all these weird-shaped properties throughout the whole city, that it's, it's a hundred and thirteen feet long on Dixie Highway, but in one section, it's twenty-five feet wide. Would never meet any type of redevelopment standards that, that we have. If you go to Seventh Avenue, we got the same thing. Go further up West Dixie Highway, up around, um, uh, the towers, uh, where Mario the Baker was. All those areas, the properties are pie-shaped. They're pie-shaped, they're strange, they're, they're, it's just crazy. I, I checked with North Miami Beach, who just did a great job redoing their whole development. And what they did is they, they said, this is the acreage you need, but they dropped it down, and they said, with a PU, the staff has more latitude, their opinion, much more latitude, to make more restrictions on that, to make sure whatever somebody's planning actually works. We don't, unfortunately, we don't have two acres in this city. We barely have an acre. And again, if somebody wants to redevelop certain areas of this city, you, you're forcing them to go buy even more property, and, and they're, they're just walking away. And this has been happening year after year, over the last five, six, seven years. People say, I come, but I'm not gonna, I can buy this property, but I'm not gonna buy another half a block so I can build something, when I can go to North Miami Beach, I can go to Bay Harbor, I can go to Downtown Miami. Not Downtown, but Seventy-Ninth Street. It's, it's just that requirement. And again, they're, you're restricted by your, by what you can put on a small piece. But to not even let, give somebody a chance to come into staff and say, how can we work with this property? And again, it's not like we only have one or two of those properties. It is up and down West Dixie Highway. It's up and down Seventh Avenue. It's just, it's just, uh,
Arch Creek Road.
Uh, Arch, Arch Creek Road.
Off the Sixteenth Avenue. We're looking at these little parcels there.
It, it just, it just, make any sense. Whether it's a half acre or an acre, I would say a half acre if you have a lawn.
So, Kevin, based on your experience, let's cut to the chase here. What's the recommendation?
My recommendation, which I made ten years ago, was a half acre. And then let staff and the, the designers and the architects design it. And that's what the market is telling you, and I don't know if the planner agrees or disagrees, consultants, that, you know, we're making these plans up that this is what we think should happen, but in the real world, people are saying, I still can't work. You got one of the best architects here. Will probably tell you that cities are saying, we'll give you the latitude that staff and you can work together on the, on the PU. Make the setbacks whatever they may be, and so you get the property to develop. Because if you, if you stick with the way it is now, we're not doing anything. We're making some really nice rules, but it's not gonna affect redevelopment in this city. And, and this would all be for naught, the comp plan, all this. But if you can't build on the properties you have in this city, then, then, and, you know, who can build, and again, the movie theater, who can build? There's a, the Canard Bakery, uh, there's a big chunk of property, a big parking lot in the back. It's not an acre. They can't build anything. It's a, it's, it's redevelopment. It's a strip of stores. You can't redevelop that.
Alright, so let's-
The Goodwill, the Goodwill, the, uh, Goodyear site. You can't redevelop that, cause it's not an acre.
Right, so, so, okay, so we, we, we see that, alright.
Alright, Kevin, with regards to that also, I have, you know, what a problem would be. And it goes, uh, configuration of land. A parcel of land for which the application is made for a planned development should be a contiguous, unified parcel with sufficient width and depth to accommodate the proposed use. The, uh, the minimum average width and depth for any planned development shall be one hundred feet. We got, we're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot again here. If, if, I can give you an example. I got that little building on Sixteenth Avenue and Tresler Street. Seven, Sixteenth Avenue runs into Seventeenth Avenue, then it heads into one hundred thirty-fifth street. It's a weird thing, okay? You got that one building there. Then you have the, the self-storage warehouses. Then you have that, that little building over there by the railroad tracks.
The, the fabric place, the fabric company.
Used to be the Drapery Place or whatever. They're not contiguous, but let, let's say a guy comes in and he wants to, bing, 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 re- redevelop that. Why can't he? Why does it have to be contiguous? I mean, as long as it's a joint in the, or, or what have you, I mean, it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah?
I, 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 I look at that, or, or, I, I, I look at Venice Lane, Venice Park Drive on the canal. That's an ideal spot right over there, tho- those low rises, to go high, it's ax, ocean access, what have you. You got Venice Lane, you got a Finger Canal coming up, and you've got, uh, Venice Park Drive. Then you have the Czechoslovakian Club. You've got a lot of land over there that could be developed. Maybe not in the next couple of years, but down the road. And that's what's gonna hap- Maybe not in the next couple of years, but down the road, and that's what's gonna happen since we're gonna get that transportation district in there.
All right, so let's, let's,
I, I would change the language on that.
Everybody, I think we're off the subject.
Let, let's try to, try to narrow the scope so we can get something we can vote on here. I, the chair can certainly accept the half acre issue first. Do we have any other issues relative to that?
The PD, I think we're relitigating the comp plan again, and we're gonna go line by line, and with all due respect to Kevin, I mean, we're gonna stand up here and talk back and forth and listen to Kevin's pitch, and we're trying, the PD is a unique, it's a unique zoning designation, it's designed for something, its definition is promoting greater innovation and creativity in the development of land. So, we're not gonna go find a Mario's the Baker that wants to be on a half acre and we'll have to make it a PD. Or we're not gonna find, I don't know, an auto dealership and put it on an acre of land and call that a PD. But we're, we're, I think we're trying to change designations to suit purposes. When the designation is what it is, and now we're gonna go back and relitigate it because we've got some, we've got some developers.
Well, I, I understand the issue that we don't have big enough properties anymore. We're, we're, we're trying to address redevelopment of all the odd shaped parcels in the city. And there are plenty of odd shaped parcels in the city from east to west. Uh, bear in mind, we are an old and built out city, and so what we have left is a lot of these really peculiar shapes and, and locations that are not fitting into the definition.
Well, but because it's an odd shaped piece of land, doesn't mean it's gonna create greater innovation and creativity.
Actually, it might.
It might, yeah.
Yes.
It may, but just because it's an odd piece of land doesn't,
All right, let's test it this way, the chair would accept a motion to reduce that to a half acre.
I, I make a motion that, uh, on, we, on, uh, number two, uh, paragraph three, minimum site area, the minimum site area required for a planned development shall be not less than one half acre, okay? And then on, on number B, I'd like to change the language, configuration of land, a parcel of land for which the application is made for a planned development shall be sufficient width and depth to accommodate the proposed use and strike out the minimum average width and depth for any planned development shall be one hundred feet, I would strike that.
Okay.
That way you guys have the ability to, and, and the planning department to, um, so there's no, yeah, in other words, there's no language addressing minimum.
Right, get rid of the minimum issues, okay. I'd, I think, uh, our attorney has,
Ninety-five feet, well, why would you have a hundred feet?
Something here that he wants to share with us.
Certainly with those parcels of land.
So, I, I'm generally in favor of what's called competent substantial evidence, which is staff recommendations. And so I've been trying to elicit from staff their position on this, and, um, whether or not he volunteers it, there are other ways to get smaller parcels approved as part of the development review process. One of which is to specify that you can get approval for a smaller site, not by going for a variance, but through the conditional use permit, which apparently all of these applications have to go through,
Yeah, the PDs.
The PD applications have to go through anyway, so if the boards have authority to grant a, a smaller site size, uh, with smaller width and depth as well, as part of the review process, it's a more informed, um, process to go through, and it accomplishes the purpose of allowing the smaller sites, but with, with, uh, an informed judgment by the boards that are reviewing the projects.
I'd strike and go to the smaller size, I'd accept the recommendation that, uh, that they made, that we made tonight, because over the last twenty years, we've had no development of any significance, so that language isn't working. If it was working, we'd have lots of projects on the table, it isn't working. So, you know, you, you can't keep doing the same thing every year and, and wonder why you don't get a different result.
Well, and one of the other things, and I don't mean to interrupt, is that the time factor, every time somebody has to put an application in, there was the, the person that built the townhouses on One Hundred Twenty-First Street, the, the nice ones over there, it took them a year and a half to go through the approval process to build those townhouses, which everybody wanted, but it was a year and a half process because you had to do this step, you had to do this step, it all comes before staff, it comes for council, comes for you guys, uh, if anything changes, and so we, it's, it's nice that the process has worked, but it's so time consuming, tens of thousands of dollars to appear before you all.
All right, so we've got the recommendation to strike the minimum, uh, uh, width and depth issue and to, uh, uh, go down to a half acre, so the chair will entertain a motion for that.
I, I made that motion.
Kenny's made the motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Aye, Charlie Ernst to second it, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, we have two opposed. Okay, well, let's poll the board, let's start from my left, Bob?
No.
Jason? Peggy? All right, I vote yes.
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 Okay, Carrie's four to three, all right, fine. I'm sorry, I, on Article Four, we'll allow the public to speak to Article Four. I'd step up to the microphone, please. Now, this is Article Four we're addressing at the moment.
My name is Jessica Alston, eleven forty Northwest One Twenty-Fifth Street. Article Four eh, has a, eh, eh, a party about the, uh, industrial, uh, the miracle, marijuana and distilleries. It has no place in our residential community, I live in Sun Kiss Grove, we want to preserve our community. As a suburban community, it is, we do not want that in our area. Additionally, uh, you don't want the presence of, um, uh, to change the zoning so that alcoholic beverages can be served in these, wherever is built in these areas. Because we do, do not want to have the presence of liquor stores, nightclubs and a casino in our community. This will destroy the integrity of our residential neighborhood. So I come to you tonight for the planning and zoning, asking you to please preserve the integrity of our community on the west side. And not allow alcoholic beverages to be able to be included in these zoning of these buildings because it's going to kill our community. Additionally, I am not as good as, uh, others may be, I, I know I'm supposed to be on the, eh, set four. Article Four, and it has to do with, uh, development design, it has to do with, uh, the size limit of five hundred square feet? Good. This, uh, uh, this limitation of five hundred square feet for, uh, a zoning of residential a, areas is only a plan to build tenement slums, tenement slums in, in, on, along the area of Seventh Avenue and the adjoining areas. When the plan for, we have never, ever, 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 never been in agreement with the development of Chinatown. Never been in agreement. The meetings that were had, I see on your minutes here, uh, about the, uh, the dates of those meetings. Yes, they were planned, but residents weren't there, I was there at every single one of them. There were people here from all over Miami Dade County, including Broward. But they were not residents. This space issue of five hundred square feet is absolutely, it's not American. You have such a small space for a family to live in, and it's a plan for a slum. I'm saying, please, zoning department, please consider the reality of the situation instead of the fantasy of it. It may look good on paper, but it will never work. So, that is my appeal to you. To reconsider and not even consider those issues. I hope that, um, I hope that, that was, uh, in that area, and again, I say to you, we do not want a casino on this area, we do, we do not want a casino, we do not want a hotel selling liquor and all other things in our residential area, we do not want it. Please do not change your usage to, uh, allow alcoholic beverages, which will mean, uh, massage parlor, parlors, nightclubs, or other kind of despicable things that go on into the wee hours of the morning, which will destroy our residential community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, staff, we don't have a proposal for a casino in the city, do we?
Not on, on the LDRs.
Okay, all right.
They don't want it on the west side, they could have it in my neighborhood.
Oh, okay, all right, uh, enough for Article Four, then the chair will close discussion Article Four, let's move on now to Article Five. Yes?
You vote?
Yes, Mike?
Can I please make a motion to approve Article Four?
As amended?
As amended, please.
All right, go ahead.
Seconded.
Yeah, seconded by Kenny Eich, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're into Article Five. Yes, now, this is gonna be a long one.
Yes, indeed, it is going to be a long one.
Peggy, you're gonna get social security before you get out of here tonight.
Yeah, my God.
I won't be a millennial anymore.
No, you won't be. All right.
Okay, well, as you all know, this is probably the one where the biggest amount of changes had occurred. Um, and I'm just going to go through a few of them as a, at a high level like we've done in the past. Um, right now, you've expanded the number of divisions, um, generally speaking. Uh, we're now, um, regulating accessory uses and daycare facilities, uh, created more transit oriented development standards, sustainable building design, fences, landscaping, parkage, sign, parking signage, a lot of other things along those lines. Um, so currently you have twenty-two, now you have twenty-three, um, divisions in the article. Uh, the whole, the, the new one that's actually replacing, uh, one of the existing is, um, uh, is going to be the tree preservation and protection, um, and that has been relocated elsewhere, it was existing, and so now it's been expanded and, um, and a lot of the definitions that you'll see in seven is related to that expanded tree preservation, um, section. Division twelve now includes a section on, um, regulating and permitting, uh, bioswells. And we relocated alcohol beverages from, uh, outside of the LDRs into the LDRs. So that's now, um, uh, Division Nine. Uh, let's see, additionally, we've, uh, updated some of the accessory uses and, and structure section. Keep going. We looked at some physical standards for private education and childcare facilities. Um, a little bit more, um, elaborative standards that, um, it, it's a result of some of discussions and requests that the staff has received over the years to address those, and it also now better comports with Miami Dade Code as well. Um, as you said, eh, now you also have something else different, uh, that I don't have up on my screen here, is that permitted, uh, you now have a table of permitted accessory uses you didn't have before. That's very helpful for, for you as a planning commission to understand what is permitted in as particular, as an accessory use. Um, and that's, a lot of that's consistent with, again, with Miami Dade County, um, as I said, with the physical childcare standards. So, um, we also added, uh, some additional parking standards, looked at murals and signage requirements. Uh, we needed to get, create a little bit more consistent criteria for the sign code. Um, and it really needed some cleanup work, um, and we also had to look at the content based constitutional issue um, that, uh, required two attorneys to put heads together, along with your, your planning staff and your consultant planning, uh, team to really make sure that your sign code meets all of the new, uh, constitutional requirements that commanded Supreme Court ruling. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, we've relocated the wireless communications from, again, outside, which was a, a chapter twenty-nine A, into Division Eighteen of this article. So, now you've got an expanded, bigger Article Five to review tonight, but some of the material was existing, it's just outside of the ordinance, all right? So, I think I've covered all of the overarching re, uh, changes, and I'm ready to sit back and see what you all think of and have questions on.
All right, first thing we'll do is we'll open the public hearing as to Article Five. Anyone wishing to speak to Article Five is welcome and invited to step forward. State your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jerry Proctor again. Ninety-one thirty, South Dayland Boulevard. Um, Article Five, among many, many other things, contains the sub-language and some changes proposed by staff to self-storage, and I know we talked about that in May, and I'll kind of circle back to that, and I, I wanna kind of talk about both Article Five and what we talked about in May together and hopefully, uh, bring it all to a, to a fine point, so that we don't have to go back and forth and get up again and so forth.
Yes, try to narrow the point.
Um, the Article Five changes that are proposed in the regulations are to permit self-storage in the C two B E district, uh, and that's in your, your table, and then there's a footnote, and it takes you to Division Seventeen where there are some restrictions, significant restrictions in C two B E for self-storage.
Can you point to page?
Um, I have it beginning Division Seventeen as page one seventy-three and going on to one seventy-four.
Give me a second, sir, thank you. All right.
I hope that's still active.
It's gonna help if we can follow along with this.
Actually, yeah, actually it would, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, Division Seventeen is existing, pre-existing language in the regulations. And page one seventy-four at the top adds some limiting criteria in the C two B E district, some significant limiting criteria, and Ms. Love went over these in May, but I know we had a long evening and I'd like to, to go over them again. Um, the property must have public streets abutting on at least three sides, no outside storage, not permitted contiguous to single family, not permitted contiguous to a public park, not permitted contiguous to Biscayne Boulevard. There's a minimum lot size requirement, must obtain site plan approval, and no vehicular access allowed on major corridors, and if you'll recall, uh, Mr. Dubin, who is here with me tonight and who is my client, uh, mentioned as part of his presentation that the, the rendering and the project that we discussed would have no direct access on One Twenty-Third Street. So, we have these proposals, and this is what we've been working on with staff for many months. And so this is in your package for consideration tonight.
So, are there changes that you're recommending other than what's here? Or are you saying you like what's done?
Not yet, uh, no, these are, these are our suggestions and we like these, we think they're very limiting, and we think they avoid a pro, a proliferation of this use, which is, I think, your intent when we were here in May. What I'm asking the council, uh, or commission this evening, What I'm asking the council, uh, or commission this evening is to kind of consider this, which you haven't really seen as part of your order of presentation until tonight, and consider this in conjunction with the action that you took in May. Uh, the action you took in May was to have certain prohibitions, certain corridors, one-twenty-third Street, where the use would be prohibited. And, and we don't have a problem with that, and as you recall, Mr. Dubin stood up and presented a rendering of a self-storage project that we've been working on for many months.
And we did grant an exemption on that, didn't we?
That's correct. So. That, that exemption, uh, and there was some language crafted in it, it's, uh, was in your minutes. That exemption, with everyone's help at the, at the dais and, and it, with your attorneys, uh, imposed a reliance standard, uh, meaning that the applicant or property owner would have to prove reliance in order to obtain that exemption, in order to build that development, specifically the development that we presented in May. What I would like to, and, and the language, uh, at the end of that language indicated that the applicant would have to prove reliance by the property owner proven to the satisfaction of the city attorney. What, what I would like to propose, and, and if you recall, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, there was a discussion in May with not only Mr. Dubin, but with Ms. Wilson says you're about the actions of that particular applicant, who is my client, Mr. Dubin. Uh, the plans that were prepared, presented, the neighborhood outreach, the preparation of this material on page one-seventy-four, which you're now considering. What I am asking the board to do, and I, I hope I'm tying all of the elements.
Just reject the question, what are you asking us?
We're asking the board to consider some language that clarifies what happened in May without removing the intent in any way, and I'll read the language. Development of a self-storage facility along northeast one-twenty-third Street shall be permitted if the applicant presented conceptual renderings to city staff prior to May seventeen, two thousand seventeen, and if the applicant meets other requirements in the land development regulations. Um, what this language does, we believe, is carries forward your.
It grandfathers you in.
Intent, uh, it helps us because it avoids uncertainty. The language that came out of that spirited discussion in May requires us to go through a reliance process with the city and with the city attorney. And we believe that through the presentation that was made in May, not only by Mr. Dubin, but by Ms. Wilson says you're, that we've established that we have relied upon, uh, this development, we've presented it, expended funds, and come forward, uh, presented limiting conditions, which are on page one-seventy-four, and we'd like to be able to move forward.
You basically want to codify the understanding we had in.
That's correct, we, we're not gonna get a free pass going forward, we're still going to have to meet the city's regulations, uh.
You just want to codify the discussion?
That's correct, and I'll present this language, which I just read.
If you'll present that to the, uh, council for the, uh, planning commission, is that appropriate, sir? You have a copy, fine.
I'd love to comment on it.
You may, this is your opportunity.
Uh, so, first question, is there a codified prohibition in four, or, or this was just a discussion at the time? How did the prohibition along one-twenty-third Street?
I mean, that was a discussion.
We, we brought that up at the last, uh, planning commission. That we didn't want a proliferation of storage units on one-hundred-and-twenty-third Street to Biscayne Boulevard to one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth Street.
This applicant slash property owner came forward and said he has a project that he's been discussing with staff.
That's correct.
And would like an exemption. So, and, and I presented language for an exception that included a requirement that reliance be shown to the satisfaction of the city attorney. And they don't like that standard, and I'm not sure why they don't like that standard. The only thing that they want is that the applicant presented conceptual renderings to city staff prior to May seventeenth. Um, I don't know how many people, other people may have presented to staff.
We've had a few.
Did we say that into the record?
I mean, we've had a few people and then we told them, you know, there's a moratorium, you cannot.
Are these self-storage facilities in the same area?
No, not self, any.
Alright, so it's, they're not self-storage, that's something else.
Any development applications.
So, the reason for a reliance standard is if you're creating an, an, an exception, there should be a reason to allow an exception, not just because somebody talked to staff. Usually there's a greater requirement, and that greater requirement is you've talked to staff and acted upon it. And that's what reliance means. You can show that you took actions in further of the development that you discussed with staff. And Florida case law is very liberal in this. It's paying money to an architect, um, it could even be application fees, though in this case there was a moratorium, so they didn't file. But paying an architect even ten thousand dollars is sufficient for reliance. Um, so to remove the reliance standard essentially means all that, all somebody needs to do is talk to staff, whether staff liked the project or not, whether they acted on it or not. I mean, Mr. Proctor was talking as if they did expend funds, well, that's reliance. So why make the argument that they did that at the same time you're removing the standard that asks you to show that you did that? It's sort of counterintuitive. Um, I still recommend that you have a requirement, and it excludes anybody coming forward and saying, oh, I talked to staff and, you know, I should qualify. If you really have a prohibition, have a standard that makes sense, and the standard that makes sense is making them show that they acted on the conversation with staff. Um, but it's in your discretion, and if you want to liberalize it, you certainly can.
Mr. Chairman.
Let's, let's hear from the planner first.
Alright, one of the things that I did, and I always try to test code in real-world situations before things move forward. I think that's where we usually fail as planning, when we're writing code. One of the things I did when I saw this limitation, it was very specific. There's only a certain area in C-two-B-E that this could go in. It can't go into other areas of C-two-B-E in the, in the city not based upon this. So this is what I spoke to you before, that all of your other prohibitions are, not, I, in my humble opinion, based upon my analysis, is that you wouldn't get a proliferation in other areas of C-two-B-E in the city. I'm sorry?
No, I say C-two-B-E.
C-two-B-E in the city, because of these limitations. When you start looking about it, must have, this is key right here. Property must have public streets abutting on at least three sides. So you start looking at where the C-two-B-E properties are that are abutting, have, have, have streets abutting three sides. This is very, very specific. You start looking at, it can't be the C-two-B-E that's adjacent, properties that are adjacent to single-family, this can't be there. So now it's narrowing down even further. It can't be adjacent to a public park or a waterway, further shrinkage. So when you look at where these are, it's, there's only one area of C-two-B-E that this can actually go into, based upon these standards. I wanted to share that with you because you're having some discussions that, that further complicate what I think is a fairly easy discussion, because your C-two-B-E, where these things can go is very, very limited to one area. And I've identified exactly where that is. Um, so just so you know, that you've narrowed it down and you won't get it all over the city and all your C-two-BEs. So just, just a discussion.
Okay, fine. Uh, we'll hear from the applicant briefly so we can try to move this forward.
Thank you, Chairman, Josh Dubin, ten thousand East Broadview Drive. I appreciate what the planner just said and everyone's effort. Um, we have no problem with the idea of reliance, um, but we would like to feel that we've, we've already proven that we've done that, so that when we leave here and you voted, we know that, we don't have the subjectivity of wondering what the city attorney is gonna want. So maybe the way to do it, Mr. Hald, is to say reliance, uh, has proven satisfactorily to the city attorney or to the planning commission, and then we would ask the planning commission to acknowledge that they agree that we have relied.
Upon what evidence? You, you, you make a determination of that based upon an affidavit with, with attachments showing that you've actually made payments, and they have nothing in front of them. So they can't do that tonight.
Okay, then I would ask that the, uh, there's, there's nothing that says there needs to be an affidavit or proof. It's, it's your addition, and I'm asking the planning commission, um, to eliminate the need that we go to, uh, someone who is not on the planning commission for them to sign off on something that the planning commission has adopted. Uh, because we don't know what standards they're gonna establish, we don't know what they're gonna require, and we thought when we left last time that we had convinced the planning commission that what we were going to do was satisfactory and was acceptable and attractive, et cetera. And now there's a variable that's being inserted that we, we'd like not to have there. We'd like to be able to leave knowing we've satisfied either the city attorney or the attorney for the planning commission, or the planning commission, and that there isn't a wild card out there that we're gonna have to deal with.
Well, let's ask the most direct question that nobody's asked yet. Have you in fact made payments to your architect?
Yes, yes.
Well, then, why are we having this discussion? You've done it, you'll prove reliance, and it's over with.
Okay, I mean, we, we've certainly paid the architect, we've paid lawyers, et cetera.
Based on staff, and your staff discussion, so you've met the reliance standard. So you're home free.
Okay. I mean, we're not in Venezuela.
Yeah, you're, you're home free, you've got what you need, you, you've written the language, we, we've approved it. You're, you're good.
Okay.
He, he wasn't part of this process, but whenever, um, I previously have drafted legislation and we're creating exceptions, um, and, and, and there's a justification for an exception, we typically write in, uh, a reliance requirement, and it's typically a lawyer, like the city attorney, that reviews it.
And he's already acknowledged that he can meet the reliance standard, and he's.
Florida case law is, is.
So then.
Very clear on this, it, it really is not subject to debate.
Invite us to the ribbon cutting, okay?
Just, just to, just a point of record.
I've had the reliance standard, can he still defer to, um, the decision that we made at the last meeting?
I, I've got the notes on it, if you want me to read it. I mean, it's basically that the exception is for projects on one-twenty-third Street that have been designed and discussed with CPND staff prior to May seventeenth, twenty-seventeen, and on which that has been reliance by the property owner proven to the satisfaction of the city attorney substantially as designed and discussed with staff. And the note is approved by motion. So that is how we left it at the last meeting.
Which is fine, the reliance standard can stay, you've paid the fees, city attorney is right here, unless she has an objection, we, we've got acknowledgement by silence, and so we can go forward.
Just, just a point.
And we're all happy. And we want to go home before the sun comes up.
Permission chair.
Yes, yes.
With the caveat that this is recommended language to the mayor and council for their first and second readings, they do have the ability to reject language or adopt alternative language.
Of course, of course.
So we are not locked into this language.
I just want to make sure, I just, I just want to make sure it gets to the council.
That's fine.
It'll, it'll get there, it'll get there, and you satisfied our needs.
Just a, just a point of record and a question for Mr. Hald, and then I'll leave you alone, I promise. Are, are you suggesting that in situations where the planning commission or others decide to grant a variance, that that is then subject to the city attorney's approval of the variance since granted in other matters?
No, that's a totally separate process.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't deal with variances here, anyway. But you're okay, at this level, you're fine. Now what happens when it gets in front of the big boys? God only knows, but at this level, you're fine. Alright, alright, let's go back to this business, gentlemen, there'll be no further issues. Uh, oh, Kevin, yes. I, I, I thought maybe, you know, I was beginning to see light in the windows and thought, perhaps you'd, you'd order breakfast for us.
No, um, uh, I've actually, uh, want to make a real quick statement.
Oh, please do.
Very quick, anything that I, that I'm suggesting is being suggested by Kevin Burns, a former elected official, a resident of this community, what I feel is best for citywide, not any individual client that I may or may not have now, last year, or a year from now, because clients come and go, but I'm a resident, I have history here, and I want the best for this city, so I don't want anybody, because I'm up here and I come up in different roles, different times. I'm here as an individual, Kevin, what I think as a professional real estate broker, what the problems I run into, and we've been running into year after year after year. So with that, I just have a couple of things and I, and I don't know how to do it, but I'm gonna just.
Well, I'll just get to a couple of things so we can.
When you go to the, uh, on page three, on the, uh, it's the section of the accessory structures, which the staff really did a great job, a lot of things.
What page, Kevin?
Page three and section five, it's a chart, and it says off-street parking structures.
Accessory use.
Under accessory uses, mid-page, there's a chart.
Off-street parking structures, okay.
Um, it's permitted, uh, but if you look under, uh, R-five, R-six, R-five, you can go seventy-five feet, R-six, you can go one-hundred-and-fifteen feet. Most likely, somebody's gonna have a parking structure under that particular building. Does this apply, Nixon, to that, or is it totally separate as to the parking garage? Huh?
That would be the limit.
There was limit, but it would, it doesn't say it's permitted. Could, what I'm saying, can we put a P there that it's automatically permitted as part of their design process, that they don't have to get a special variance to put a parking garage under their one-hundred-and-fifteen-story, you know, within the, the building?
Wait, you're talking about off-street parking?
I'm asking, my question is, does that off-street parking part of a multifamily building that you're building?
I see what your question is.
There's, there's some confusion out there of what, of a, if you have a two-story parking deck and then you have residential on top, do you have to get special permission just to have that parking deck underneath it?
The pedestal part.
The pedestal.
I mean, I mean, okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
Right.
I mean, it should be automatically permitted that you don't come in and get a special variance to put a parking garage underneath the building that you're building, um, as an apartment building. It's in the R-five, because you're going seventy-five feet. You may or may not want to do it, but it should be permitted.
No, you would.
Okay, and, and so permitted in R-five, R-six, and then in the M-one, where you have, um, the, the, lots of parking places in the industrial park, why would you not allow stack, uh, a parking garage there? For, because we're running out of space there, you have it for Lexus, you have it for the new Audi dealership. If somebody wanted to build it in, especially in the M-one, we allow everything. That automatically should be permitted, because what happens is you're just running another roadblock, and I'm just trying to make things, you know, simple and consistent.
Yeah, alright.
And the same thing under the BE, because under BE, you can go one-hundred-and-fifteen feet. Also, uh, BE zoning is the, uh, uh, it's, it's something, but it's anyway, you go one-hundred-and-fifteen feet, so.
Kevin, besides R-five and R-six, you're on the same row?
With M-one.
Yeah.
And the, you know, industrial, and then under BZ.
Under what was the other one?
BZ, because you're allowed to go one-hundred-and-fifteen feet. Most likely, you're gonna put parking underneath the, whatever structure you build.
On, on chart, I, I see R-five and R-six open, so that means you cannot have a permitted.
Yeah, his recommendation is to add.
It should be automatically permitted as part of your design, whatever you're building.
Sure, uh, uh.
Nixon, what about?
Because R-five, you're allowed to go seventy-five feet, R-six, you're allowed to go one-hundred-and-fifteen feet.
Yes.
Most likely, you're going to have parking underneath your, your building.
So, well, how about, um, we, we did away with, we did away with R-three, correct?
The other ones are smaller, you know, smaller height.
We have R-four, R-five, and R-six, why aren't we?
For, for thirty-five feet, you're not gonna need a parking deck.
Alright, yeah, 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 because you're talking about height.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, one of the things I wanted to see happen was an exemption, that the, the pedestal did not count against the overall height of the building. Unfortunately, we, we didn't get the first space with that one.
Well, I'm just saying that it, it makes sense to, in these particular categories. Well, I'm just saying that it, it makes sense to, in these particular categories, why would not already be permitted?
Yeah, all right, I can, I can understand that, and, and that's, that's a reasonable request.
The, another one on.
So that, that.
Let's take this one at a time, because this'll get confusing, Kev, if we.
Okay.
You wanna make the motion?
Because you may like things and not like things, so it's okay.
What categories, again, are you looking at?
Oh, R-four, R-five, R-six.
R-five, R-six.
M-one.
M-one and BZ.
BZ.
What about RO?
RO is resi, is office, and that's low height, that's only thirty-five feet.
Okay, fine.
You know, if stat wants it, but I, I don't see that.
I, I, you know, I see him going down Seventh Avenue, what, what, I, I would put it.
Well, you're, you, remember RO is a transition to the residential of low intensity, so you don't want to have that traffic.
Okay, all right, you got it, that's right.
Okay, fine.
That's like in a house that was converted to a, a law office or something like that.
So then the chair will call for a motion to include the parking under BZ, M-one, R-six, and R-five. So moved by Mike, seconded by?
Kenny.
Peggy, okay, Peggy, give you credit for that, all in favor?
You get a brownie button.
All right, you got that.
Page five, same category, section B, it's, well, I guess it's B now.